All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. We're going to have the invocation from Reverend David L. Dixon, Senior Associate Minister at Travelers Rest Missionary Baptist Church in Marlboro, Georgia. Please, if you would, stand with me, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal All- wise God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. Thank you for this day. Thank you, O God, for these, my sisters and my brothers. I pray, God, that you continue to keep us in your will and in your way. Continue to bless us, O God, as you see fit. Pray for the leaders of this county. Pray for all of these people that are gathered to discuss the business of the welfare of your people, God. I pray that you touch them in their heart. Let them think, God, on one another rather than themselves, God. I pray that you have your way in this place. Blessed in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the November 3, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The first sort of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, does any member want to offer any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Clerk, I would like to add to the agenda. I would like to ask for the Planning and Zoning Administrator's position to be reposted and posted at a higher salary of $73,000 due to the fact that we are getting a little less than average qualifications on those submitting applications. So, we're looking for a better field of qualified applicants. Is there a second?
A second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions on it?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a...I'm supportive of the concept, but just administratively, aren't we supposed to have a Human Resources request to amend the job description and the salary?
Job description is the same. We're just asking for the salary to be increased.
Okay, and so we can just do that as an attachment to the agenda?
Ms. Bright.
If we can, that's fine. It's just in times gone past, it seems like we had something in front of us.
I did conduct a survey of the metro area, and the survey came back at an average salary of $73,000. And I just got all that information back today.
So, back to my concern about the operational or administrative...do we need to have a legislative request before us, or are we just amending the agenda to consider something that's not on paper?
That's correct. Consider the reposting of the position.
Right, but don't we have to amend the salary on the position before we can repost it with the new position?
Ms. Bright, or can you help us out there, Ms. Barnes?
I thought that it was for you all to increase the salary for the position and then to repost it. I may have misunderstood the...what you were placing on the agenda.
He just asked that it be increased and then reposted.
Okay.
All right, so we're increasing the salary of the...
I had something to say. Can we hear from...what was your...
Now, are we making the civil service, non-civil service? Are we changing the benefits?
Yes, Commissioner, to your question specifically, I believe we will have to get the recommendation of the Board, but I think it has to go before civil service first, and then the Board of Commissioners consider that once it goes before the Civil Service Board, is my understanding of the regulation.
Except that that's a non-civil service protected position.
I didn't...I wasn't aware that it was a non-civil service protected position. However, the civil service rules say that in order to start someone at a step higher than step one, that does require a civil service board and Board of Commissioner approval. My understanding of this is that it's not to start someone at a higher step than step one, but just to increase the salary.
Absolutely, because if it's voted down, it's a moot point. Therefore, once it's voted, then it can go through those steps to Civil Service Board or whoever needs to go through. And then, once we get that person that we're looking to hire, if they are amenable to that salary, then we can hire them under, at that time, that salary. Now, is it a civil service position or not?
According to my records, I show it as a civil service position.
Okay. All right.
And $73,000 would be a grade 33, which is $73,404 on our pay schedule.
So, the process would be, we would approve just the posting and the listing at $73,000. Once that has been approved, then it goes before the Civil Service. Civil Service approves it, and then...
What if they don't?
I thought it'd go to Civil Service first.
Service first.
If you wanted to bring in your zoning administrator at higher than step one of whatever pay grade, that's what would go to the Civil Service Board.
So, really, we don't have to amend it. We can just go ahead and hold interviews, and if somebody agrees to the salary or not. But we...the purpose of upping the starting salary is to get more interest in that position. Right now, we have how many people who applied for it?
And I'm not against that. I was just to say it again, administratively as well.
I'm with you. I'm with you. We just want to get it right.
So, are we...is the request to change the pay grade from the current pay grade to a pay grade 33, which would have a starting salary of...
Yes.
$73,000, okay. So, then, that person, unless that person would not accept a starting salary of $73,404...
Right. That's the step one, isn't it?
Right, that is the step one.
So, if it's step one, we don't need to go to civil service for them to approve it. That's the step one.
Yeah, exactly. But we have to change the salary requirement first.
But that's just administratively, procedurally. It doesn't need to go before anyone. We're just deciding.
Is that right?
You're deciding to raise the pay grade to a higher pay grade, to grade 33.
Okay, so, Commissioner Edmison, does that answer your question or not?
Yes, so what you're doing is you're making a motion to add to the agenda consideration for the position of Planning and Zoning Administrator to be moved to a grade 33, step one.
Correct.
And repost it.
And to repost it.
And repost it at that salary.
Okay. Okay, I'm clear on that.
Good. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments?
Ms. Davis, Resolution 2015-274 regarding the franchise fees for AT&amp;T, we're discussing with legal earlier. I understand we may want to consider holding that off the agenda for some legal research?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
To hold. All right, I'll second it. Probably moving to second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing now, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with the approved amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Approval of the October 20, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Regular Business Meeting Minutes from October 20.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Probably moving to second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
The Board will now hear public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens that have signed up to address the Board. Citizens will have a maximum of three minutes time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Reverend Joseph Weller, excuse me.
Good evening. Members of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, citizens of Clayton County, I'm Reverend Joseph Wheeler. I reside in Rivendale. Mr. Chairman, I've come again to let you know there's a compromise on the table. We want you to reinstate Chief Porter, let him serve out his retirement time. He served 29 years with Clayton County, loyal police service. He should retire honorably. Now, you made some missteps along the way. I want to point them out. On August 18, I stood up here and addressed the body, and I told you it was wrong. Two days later, I got a call from Captain Jackson, Captain Rebecca Brown. They wanted to meet with me in confidentiality. I told them I wasn't going to do it until I meet with you, Commissioner Edmison, and Commissioner Rooks. Two days later, I got a call from Sheriff Victor Hill, who said he wanted to meet with me. I met with him, he sided with you, and I knew something underhanded was going on, because you and Victor Hill never got along. So, that was a problem for me. Next meeting, I came, you had police officers here, and Rebecca Brown was the one they used to speak for them. And I know there's a lot of articulate police officers at the Clayton County Police Department, but none of them probably wanted the job. They chose Rebecca Brown. I knew something was wrong. Then, there was a parade of actors and actresses who came before this Board to try to validate that weak premise that you have. But we realized that all of that was theatric, and the last gentleman who came up here at the last meeting used the honorable police officer who was fallen in the line of duty. I thought that was very low. I was troubled by that when I went home, because it told me that somebody's desperate. You're trying to defend a weak premise. It is not good. If the chief had shot his wife, or if we learned that he was pedophile, I mean, give us something to work with, Mr. Chairman. I would go away. But we haven't...there's no reason for you to fire the chief. You have disrupted the chain of command at the police department. You don't have to accept the compromise, but you have to accept responsibility for dividing Clayton County and for that big cloud of suspicion hovering over the Clayton County Police Department. You have to accept responsibility for the bad publicity that Clayton County is getting. That award used to go to the Board of...the Clayton County Board of Education. Then, it swung over to Sheriff Hill's office. Now, it's at the Clayton County Commissioners. You have to be responsible for that, not us. We'll be protesting on Tower Boulevard, Georgia 85, Highway 138 and Highway 54, and then we'll be at the police department itself protesting. What we want to do is broaden the discussion around the dinner table and at the water cooler. So, it's not going away. We're all going to be locked on, and everybody...there's not going to be arrests for anybody in Clayton County as long as this matter is not resolved amicably. Now, the best thing for us to do is resolve it right, because protocol has been broken. And there's the...Chief Register is not going to be able to restore the integrity of the police department.
Excuse me, Reverend Wheeler. Your three-minute time limit has expired.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Carl Swenson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Carl Swenson, CCCOC. And before you, I have laid a copy of the most current 1789 Constitution, or most complete 1789 Constitution for the United States of America, the same document you take an oath to support and defend. That little booklet is your contract with we the people, a contract which you consistently violate, choosing instead to listen to the army of attorneys who use word art they defined through definitions in their Bible, Black's Law Dictionary. Another work of their word art is OCGA, which has gone to great pains to write rules and regulations that all apply to the myriad of corporations and agencies the people have been led to believe are their government. There is but one law of the land, and you have that in front of you now. You always have had the choice whether to be in compliance or not, but by virtue of your choices, you have chosen to violate that oath. The first and most egregious violation stems from your continued reliance on that class of people known to all as esquires, defined in their own Black's Law Dictionary as a title of nobility above that of a gentleman and below a knight. See Article 1, Section 9, Clause 8 of that Constitution. How many...what does the Commission conceal when there are no specifics on a settlement with Brittany Cousins? We don't know anything about it. What are you instructed to hide from public view? Why is the party to an amended death certificate concerning Officer Wallace seeking to have it state he was not on official duty when responding to a 911 call in a police vehicle? Why was the person who failed to yield causing the officer's death not charged or pursued? Your handlers, the county attorneys led by Christie Barnes and Jack Hancock, are advising you in what I believe is a criminal fashion. It is also my belief that the reason for concealing the truth from the public stems from the lack of sufficient liability coverage due to a high incidence of claims against the county and its officers and/or employees. How many errors and omissions is okay with you when you're submitting documents to people through open records requests? Because that's what we got. I requested a copy of the Certificate of Liability. What I got was a document that basically said, "Don't trust this. This is just for informational purposes." But it did say that there was a million-dollar self-insurance on there. Is that what we have been reduced to? Is that why we are now having to pull from county funds, operating funds, in order to pay for any of these settlements that occur? Errors and omissions. How about the bond? We have one surety bond for you guys for your oath of office, Western Surety. It's signed by an agent or a representative who hasn't been able to sell that product since 2003. What's up with that?
Mr. Swenson, your three-minute time limit has expired.
Thank you, sir. Heather Menden...Mendendorf. I know I didn't get that right.
Could you please restate your name for the record and your county of residency?
Heather Menden Dorf, CCCOC.
What was that now?
CCCOC, Clayton County Citizens Oversight Committee.
What county is that?
Oh, well, we're in Henry County, but...
What county do you reside in?
Henry.
Thank you.
Yep. Knowing that most of you do not speak legalese, yes, it's a real language, the esquires who speak it will use their word art to convince you that it's all okay. It is not okay, and this is the nasty bed you've made for yourselves and the good and trusting people of this county. I ask that concerned peace officers, not the DA's office or esquires, work with us and review our findings and take appropriate action so that we can clean up this malfeasance and fiduciary irresponsibility. What is done in the shadows is itself a violation of the public trust. Being a part of the CCCOC is an education into how this thing called government got away from the people. It drives home the fact, as I believe that government is no longer working for us. It believes we now work for it, whatever it really is. This, and what I have to say, is my belief. Is everything being settled using self-insurance? The esquires devised the current insurance and bonding scheme so that criminals and/or uninsurable people can take seats they are not qualified to seek by virtue of not being able to bond up, using shell companies to make people believe their government is properly insured and the elected are properly bonded. We at the CCCOC believe fraud is being perpetrated against the people of this county and further believe this is happening in most, if not all, of Georgia's 159 counties by virtue of the continued concealment of actions filed against the county. Clayton County is now in the nation's 10% of high-risk governmental corporations. The prospect for insurability remains bleak. Could this be the reason why crimes against the people of this county initiated or supported by the esquires in control remain unprosecuted? What goes on in executive session stays in executive session. This is the esquire's version of transparency.
Thank you. Dee Corley.
Hi, Dee Corley of the CCCOC, Cobb County.
Thank you.
People here wonder why this Board even attempts to create a budget when the truth of the matter is that it doesn't. This work is done by the Finance Department. Now, that's an interesting term, Finance Department. Another creation of the esquires, but why? That would be to put them under the control of this Board who answer only to the esquires and in this building rather than their proper place, working under the Clayton County Treasurer. Who is the Clayton County Treasurer? To hear the esquires answer, this is the Finance Department. More errors and omissions. The proper place for that department is directly under the County Treasurer, Mr. Terry Baskin. To date, he has been the only man acting in honor in a covenant of Esquire-controlled officials, and that's not only...and that's not the only convenient erasure of county officials by this monster organization called the bar. How about the county coroner? They made that office disappear as well. Why? Because it's the only officer who could lawfully arrest an elected sheriff, a sheriff who now answers only to the corporate courts, not the people. Violations of the oath of office are now just a joke to supposed public servants. To the people of Clayton County, I ask, are you better served by esquires who have removed the Finance Department from the County Treasurer or not? Are you better served by having two constitutional offices erased, eliminating the checks and balances required for constitutional compliance, or are you satisfied that the incorporation by these esquires, of all things governmental, is proper? Can anyone find a reason why Karen House...Karen's House of Shoes continues to be listed with the online Yellow Pages with an address of 112 Smith Street? Please tell us how the esquires continue to justify that fraud upon the people. Why did this Board allow such a blatant misuse of county funds used to create and maintain it, and why is it still in the Yellow Book and Yellow Pages online? Fraud is fraud, no matter what you call it. How long before the people realize all of your impersonating public officials? How long before a truly independent Board of Review is allowed in to clean this mess up? How long before this Board of Directors hears the clarion call to get out of the house? This can all be laid at the feet of the real criminals, operating the fictitious courts and their agents, the esquires. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment. The Board will now consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Ms. Brewer, before you start, I'd like to take a moment to read into the minutes of this meeting a letter of findings. On October 6, Mr. Oscar Blalock came before this Board. He read a letter asking for an investigation and an indictment on my person for having a meeting at one of our local facilities. So, it was presented to the District Attorney, Tracy Graham, who did conduct an investigation, and she rendered the following findings, and I read from this letter. It's dated October 27, 2015, and it's addressed to Mr. Blalock. Dear Mr. Blalock, in your first letter, you alleged that Mr. Jeffrey Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, had misused county property for personal use on October 1, 2015. In your second letter, you acknowledged that Chairman Turner personally paid for the use of the facility. We did, in fact, obtain proof of his payment. When the facility is rented, any lawful gathering is approved. The event was apparently aimed at trying to improve Clayton County and to develop strategies for that purpose, and attendee told us that was what the event was about. There is no violation of any law that was committed by Chairman Turner in hosting said event. Finally, and that I was neither invited to nor did I attend said event, there was no need for me to disqualify from investigating, saying, "Sincerely, Tracy Graham Lawson, District Attorney, Clayton Judicial Circuit." Thank you. Please take yours altogether, ma'am.
Good evening, and thank you. Central Services has four items. The first is a recommendation for award 1530 ball field lighting relamp and electrical maintenance for Clayton County Parks. It's an annual contract with Deco Incorporated doing business as Davidson Electrical Company located in Covington, Georgia. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation General Fund. The second is a recommendation for a sole source award for the purchase of a subscription for a West Complete Law Library Program for the Clayton County Juvenile Court in the amount of $28,147.68 with West Thomas Reuters Business located in Redmond, Washington. Funding is available through the Juvenile Court Department General Funds. The next is a memo to amend RFQ 2015-19 influenza vaccine administration for Clayton County employees. The recommendation is to amend the language in Section 7 governing law of the draft agreement to reflect that the agreement will be construed and enforced by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the final is an emergency contract for award of EMS medical supplies, and we did supply you with a copy of the contract. We sent in a placeholder for this, and we are still in negotiations with Boundtree Medical Supplies. The current vendor is ceasing operation as of November or at any moment now, and we needed to find substitute suppliers for them. So, the recommendation is being made pursuant to Section 220 and 2128, and it's to approve the emergency contract award to Christians Pharmacy located in Forest Park, Georgia, and Boundtree Medical Supply located in Dublin, Ohio. The contract with Christians Pharmacy has been confirmed for a term of six months. The one with Boundtree Medical, we understand, will only be through December 31, and we are still waiting on final documentation for that. We received notice verbal on October 23 and written notice on October 26 that they were ceasing business. We will award primary and secondary awards to each supplier so that we will have redundancy in our supplies for them. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions on any of the items?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer.
Yeah, on...is that Boundtree Medical?
Yes.
Okay, did you say they were going out of business?
No, the Wilson Pharmacy that we had before is ceasing operations, and they notified us that they would not be able to honor their contract any further. And because of the critical nature of the EMS supplies, we sold out quotes from these other two vendors.
Okay.
Commissioner Brewer.
My question on the influenza vaccine, Ms. Bright, is she...oh, I know Kaiser does the flu shots, but does the other medical plan provide for free flu shots? Just...
This is for the Aetna Plan, pre-ride aid.
Gotcha.
That's it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you.
The Board will now consider the request of Dennis Johnson, Budget Manager.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, I have one budget amendment, Budget Amendment 4-39 in the amount of $53,240, and that is to appropriate funds from SPOLOs fund balance to provide a reel mower for use at the Lovejoy Soccer Fields.
Is there a motion?
Most approve.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Probably moving to second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you.
The Board will consider the request of Renee Bright, Human Resources Director.
Please take them together.
First item I have is a request from the Sheriff's Office. It's a request for a reorganization that includes eliminating one Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant and one correctional officer position, creating a Deputy Sheriff Two position, and reclassifying two Deputy Sheriff Two positions to two Deputy Sheriff Sergeant positions, eliminate a correctional lieutenant position, and create a new classification of correctional captain at a pay grade 27, and then finally to create two part-time clerical positions, and this will result in a savings of approximately $17,000. The next is a request to reclassify the Administrative Assistant, which is a pay grade 16 position in the Commission Office, to an Assistant to the Chief Operating Officer at a grade 19, Step 5, with an effective date of July 1, 2015, and funds are available to cover the additional cost for this request.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions on either item?
Yes, I have one. On...when is the...number two, to reclassify the vacant administrative position? And I saw two dates in the write-up. Which...when is this effective?
We're requesting that the effective date be July 1, 2015.
Why?
That's the date she went into that position unofficially. She was doing the work then.
So, that's retroactive?
Yes, it would be retroactive. And that's not...let me back up, because that's not the date she actually went in. What date did she come over here to assume that position without the pay?
April 23.
It's April 23, and July 1 is the start of the budget period. That's why we're going back to that date.
But the person was being paid for the position... But, the person was being paid for the position they were holding anyway. Why is it retroactive?
Additional duties and responsibilities, where she was the administrative assistant for Parks and Recreation, which is one when she came over. As the assistant to the COO, then she was tasked with keeping up with roughly 22 departments through her administrative duties.
Commissioner Hamburg, it would only be the difference in the salary.
The difference in the pay.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not, it's not on top of it. It's wherever the difference is.
Thank you, okay. That's a little better, thank you.
All right.
It's not written in here, in the explanation, but okay. That's better.
The, um, the assistant to the Chief Operating Officer, that position already exists?
No, that, that's creating a new position.
So, when we had Ms. Anderson as our Chief Operating Officer, we had, I think, Sloan?
That's correct.
Sloan was not the assistant to the Chief Operating Officer?
When that position became, no, when that position became vacant, that position, which we voted on to move it to the TV23.
So, that position at that grade existed, we just moved it somewhere else?
Actually.
And now we're talking about moving somebody else up to that position in grade?
Actually, wasn't the administrative position created in this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, so we're just moving her over at a higher pay, because she was, she's our existing employee?
Correct. For the 16 budget, we added the administrative assistant at grade 16 Step 1, and this transaction would then increase the pay to grade 19 Step 5.
Correct.
What is the grade that the existing position is in?
The one that was created.
No, I got that, that's 16.
Okay.
The, so, we're talking about Ms. Terry, right? So, Ms. Terry came in from Parks and Recs and been working for Dietrich for the last several months. What, what grade in position is she currently at?
She, that position's at a grade 18.
So, she's gone from an 18, but she hasn't lost any pay? She's been going from an 18 to a 19, is what we're talking about?
Right, that's correct.
Because of the added duties and responsibilities she had.
Okay, so, when it talks about moving from a grade 16 to a 19, and the difference being $6,936, are we talking about the position, the grade 16 to 19 spread? Or are we talking about her 18 to 19 spread? Because she's already getting paid for 18, grade 18.
That's right, but she's actually being paid out of the Parks and Recreation budget.
Well, she was doing Parks and Recreation work.
As well as work for the COO.
So, the difference should only be from a grade 18 to a grade 19 difference? Because she was being paid grade 18, she's still being paid grade 18, right?
Now she is, yes.
So, she wants to go from an 18 to a 19?
Correct. This difference.
Right, Dennis? You're looking at me like you disagree with that.
Well, the, the budgetary impact, because you added the step, the position at grade 16 Step 1, in order to make it budget neutral, you need to go from that position that you added that is unfilled to this new position that you're creating, assistant to the COO.
Then you're going to have a line item to move some money back to Parks and Recs from Board of Commissioners for the two-step difference.
I mean, that's one of many funding alternatives that you could have for that, yes.
But, when she vacates that administrative assistance position at Parks and Recs, that goes back to Step 1.
No, it's still a grade 18, though.
Was it a grade?
It's a grade 18.
Originally, it's a grade 18.
But, it's budgeted in Parks and Recreation, and it would become vacant at a grade 18 Step 1.
Gotcha, okay.
But, she's still only getting the difference of what she was making at Parks and Recs, and what the new grade would be as assistant for COO.
Absolutely, that's the only difference.
So, it's no more, she's not getting any more from a 16 to a 19. She's getting the difference between an 18 and a 19, regardless of how we classify it. It's just that little small increase, right?
Yes, correct.
I know, but what I'm saying is, it says right here, the vacant administrative assistant budget is budgeted at $31,000 and change. The new position is 38, the difference is 6. And what they're saying is, we want to give her $6,000 retroactive.
No, that's the budgetary impact. The impact to her personally would only be from 18 to the 19.5. That would be the increase.
A third of that, or whatever that is.
Yes. But, in this case, it's strictly the budgetary impact in the, in the discretionary, which is the 6935.
Any other questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose.
Nay.
Four to one passes. Thank you.
Do you want me to present the?
Oh, I thought you had. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And then, lastly, I have the request to reclassify the planning and zoning administrator position from a pay grade 27 to a pay grade 33, and then I'll repost the position at that higher salary.
All right, I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second. Any questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose.
Nay.
It's four to one. Thank you.
Kristy Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Please take them together.
Can we take?
Except for, go ahead.
271, 278, and 279?
271, 278, and 279.
That's right.
They are, yes.
First is Resolution Number 2015-269, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept supplemental compensation from the State of Georgia for Judicial Secretary Glenda Hasty. In this instance, the county will be reimbursed $5,793 by the state annually, effective July 1st, 2015. Next is Resolution Number 2015-270, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Prosecuting Attorney's Council of the State of Georgia, and in accordance therewith, accept grant funds to be used in connection with the Victims of Crime Act and the Clayton County Solicitor General's Victim Assistance Program. These are reflecting grant funds in the amount of $35,825, with a local match of $8,956. Next is Resolution Number 2015-272, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept two seized vehicles from Clayton County Police Department Drug Investigations to authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county to provide for the sale, for the dispersal of sale proceeds. And this is for the seizure of a 2002 Mercedes-Benz E44S, E434S, and a 2002 Acura 3.2. Next is Resolution Number 2015-273, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to terminate its medical director agreement with Richard Duke's, M.D., to authorize the county to enter into an agreement with Suda Ready, M.D., providing for the terms and conditions under which she will serve as medical director and perform the duties and responsibilities required by the Georgia Department of Public Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services. Resolution Number 2015-275 is a resolution authorizing Commissioner Gailby Hamburg to partner with Fast Park and Relax to host a job fair at the Virginia B. Gray Recreation Center. This event will be Tuesday, November 17th until Thursday, November 19th. The event will be held each day from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., and again, from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Excuse me, is that corrected on your, because it's reading two days, but you read it as three, which is correct?
Yes, the resolution says Tuesday until Thursday.
Okay.
So, that is, it's three days.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 2015-276, which is a resolution providing for the conveyance of Clayton County's interest in Linda Avenue, Easton Drive, also known as, also known as Eastern Avenue, and Brenda Avenue, also known as Brenda Street, lying and being in Land Lot 13 of the 13th Land District of Clayton County, Georgia, to authorize the county to convey the subject right of way to the property owners, to authorize the chairman to execute the quick claim deed and conveyance of, and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. And the next one I have is Resolution 2015-277, which we listed as a discussion item with the Board's consent. I will go ahead and read that now. It is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Morrow for the provision of emergency communications services, or E911 services, and to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there any discussion centered around this?
Yeah, um.
You guys want to make a motion in a second first?
Well, I, I'm, okay, go on. Make a motion in a second on something.
Is there a motion? Is that a motion? You make, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Probably move them second. Okay, is there any discussion, questions?
Yes, Deidre, when you, when you talked to me about these, you left it with me like there were two choices, and I'm not clear on either choice. I know we're going to vote on one of them, but, I mean, we'll choose one of them, or whatever.
We're not deciding those.
This is Morrow.
This is Morrow.
No, but you, no, 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 no. You told me about two options we have for Morrow, and so...
Yes, ma'am, if I misled you, my correction, it was really about the two options with Lake City.
Okay.
But, only one option with Morrow.
Okay, all right.
Morrow's going to give us $100,000 plus their E911 fees.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Is that the amount they were spending before changing over? How much have they been spending on the E911?
Ms. Riddick, can you come forward and address that question?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. If you're asking what the budget for the department is, it's about $700,000, but that's fully staffed.
I'm sorry, could you state your name for me?
Sylvia Riddick, the City Manager for the City of Morrow. So, our, the budget for that department is $700,000, between $650,000 and $700,000 annually.
And we're getting 100?
No, how much are you receiving in 911 fees?
Our 911 fees are like $140,000 annually.
But, it's been costing you 700?
That's, they were fully staffed, they're staffed.
We had 10 full-time dispatchers. But, if I may, that's for all of our calls, which are 68,000 calls a year. But, the only thing that the county would be servicing are emergency calls, which run about 12,000 a year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Riddick. Here or none? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had a quick, quick question for the medical director termination contract. Just wanted to make sure, are there, is there any termination language, or notification, or contract buyout, or anything that this consideration would put us up to, would subject us to?
No, sir, the, the current contract has a 10-day notification clause, so Dr. Ready's contract will not take effect until the 16th of this month.
Okay.
Which will give us from now till then to notify.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Resolution Number 2015-271 is a resolution to amend the Clayton County PY 2015 Annual Action Plan to allow for the recapture and reallocation of funding to administer the Student Housing Initiative Program, which is supported by the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Act, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Fail is due to lack of a second.
Resolution Number 2015-278 is, and this initial language is going to be the same, is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake City for the provision of fire services, emergency management services, and emergency communications services, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And this resolution, separate from the 279, will authorize Lake City to levy a tax upon its residents as compensation for the services contemplated in the intergovernmental agreement.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, see if I say this right. I'd like to make a motion to remove, and if that's seconded, does that allow us to discuss and then vote on removing it if we were to choose 279?
I would think that...
Am I saying that right?
You're removing 278?
I want to propose that.
His motion will be to remove 278. And then, when we went to 279, then I would assume we have to vote on that separately anyway.
Correct.
Can we, can we have the chief explain the difference in the two? Or get an explanation?
It's a financial thing.
It's a financial...
And you can let him talk about it. I can answer that really easily.
Uh, I would rather hear it from the chief.
But, we still need a first and a second.
Absolutely. So, did you make a motion?
If, if I'm saying that right, make a motion to not consider.
To remove this from the...
To remove this from consideration.
Oh, which one, 278?
278.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Probably move them second. Any other discussion?
Do you want to hear from the chief?
Uh, no, not if we're going to remove it.
Okay.
There's no need.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
That's removed, okay. That is that. Resolution Number 2015-279 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lake City for the provision of fire services, emergency management services, and emergency communications services. This resolution will authorize the county to create a special tax district within the boundaries of Lake City as compensation for the services contemplated in the intergovernmental agreement.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second. Any questions? Here or none? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board.
After we took that off.
I would like to request an executive session for real estate and litigation.
It's Mr. John Johnson, present to present. To present item number 20.
Good evening, Chair and Board. I have Ms. Deborah Stone with me.
Hi.
I respectfully request the extension of Mrs. Stone's contract between Clayton County and herself. Her contract is due to end December the 31st, 2015, and I would like to ask for an extension of six months from January 1st, 2016, to June 30th of 2016. Mrs. Stone has spearheaded a pilot program which dealt with 300 youth of color from Forest Park Middle, Monish Mill Middle, North Clayton Middle, Point South, and North Clayton High School. One of the functions that Mrs. Stone had was monitoring the kids of at risk for suspension, expulsion, arrest, and the dropout rates of these young men.
I, I didn't hear that part. It, it does what now? I didn't, I didn't understand the last sentence.
She was monitoring these 300 youth, black African Americans, monitoring those kids who are at risk for suspension, dropout rates, arrests, and expulsion from those schools. And the grant, there should have, there should be probably about $17,115 left at the end when the grant or her contract expires.
$17,100?
115.
And that's going to be enough compensation for her?
For six months.
For six months?
Yes.
My question...
So, there's no impact to the...
There's no impact to the county. The money is already in there, and that money was left because there was a prior employee there that did not take the medical benefits that was offered with the grant, but chose to take the medical benefits that was provided by her father.
Just curious, you say she's monitoring these students to make sure, no, you say they're monitoring them. What exactly are you doing? I mean, what, what strategies? I mean, what, what strategies are in place besides monitoring, monitoring them? And this is just from my knowledge, from my knowledge, or do you have data to show how many kids or whatever you deem at risk? How many of those have you kept, and they're academics so far after working with them?
Great question. Yes, the monitoring piece is to ensure service delivery, quality of service delivery, progress of students, and most importantly, to see, are we on track for meeting our goal, keeping kids in school, out of court? What does progress look like? How do we quantify that? So, that is the ultimate goal. You hit the nail on the head. You couldn't have said it any better. That's my purpose, is to look at outcomes, data. How do we prove that this is effective? So, that's the monitoring piece.
So, is anything done with this monitoring?
Specifically, perhaps, actually, I don't understand your question.
Okay, once you monitor these kids, does anybody step in and, and assist with that, with whatever your findings are?
This is under the system of care, right?
Right, this is under the system of care, and it's with the School to Justice Partnership. So, we come together with the Executive Board, and we let them know what our outcomes are showing, so that we can effectively move forward and strategically, and having effective programming. What works with the kids, let's capitalize on that. What doesn't work, let's change it up.
That's, that's what I-
Yes, sorry about that, I misunderstood.
And again, I'm sorry for prolonging. I, it's just for my benefit. So, you're, you're monitoring, does that include working with the families of the students? Or are you just doing this at the schools during the day? Are you working with the counselors?
Kids are being mentored at home. They're being monitored at home with counselors going directly into the homes after they come out of school.
The counselors from your department, or counselors from the schools, or?
Counselors from the school and wraparound services.
Okay. I have a question. What, what would have happened if the entire amount had been used by the prior employee had they been using or utilizing the medical benefits? What would have happened in this case?
Good question.
Ms. Stone?
So, then I can answer your question effectively. Are you saying what would happen to my position?
Right, so you're, it, it appears to me that the only reason there's an extension is because there's extra money.
Correct.
So, had there not been extra money, what would have happened?
To be perfectly frank with you, I am very committed to this work, and it does need to move forward. So, the work will continue. The question is really, will there be compensation for it or not?
Additional compensation?
No, compensation period.
You've not been compensated?
Because my contract ends the end of December, so we are asking for an extension from January to June, and that work will need to be done, so I will see it through to completion, to fruition. However, at this time, other than the monies that you're looking at, there is no additional money. So, yes, the work will get done. The question is whether or not there will be compensation for, if this extension is approved.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion.
What would happen to the funds if this wasn't approved? Would they just lapse back to the state?
Be de- deobligated, yes, sir.
All right, any other questions for him? All right, here and now.
And if it's a grant, I will say this, if it's a grant, if it goes back to the state, would that reduce the amount of potential grant funds for the following year?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second. Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, um, not you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to when Ms. Bright presented hers, and I know we did some reclass in the sheriff's office, or some restructuring, whatever it was, when we have these items, can we get some kind of analysis of, you know, the impact for the next two years? I, I think I mentioned that in the last meeting. So, I know, you know, when people say, "Well, we're going to use this to create this position, we're going to eliminate that," whatever, and, you know, perhaps, yes, for this year, as Commissioner Rook was saying, that leftover money was there this year, but are we knowing going forward for each of these positions, you know, what the impact's going to be for the next couple of years? And if we can just have that, I'm asking the board if you-
But we already did that analysis, and then, but we didn't incorporate it into the budget, so now we're just still picking and choosing like we always have.
And, and that's what I'm saying, but at least if somebody's bringing it before us, we will know what the impact's going to be for the next two years, because it sounds good when you say, "Well, I got leftover money from somebody's medical, I got leftover money from this and that," but what's going to be the impact in the next two years? So, even if we could just have that as we vote, that's what I'm asking, is this board would agree with me on that? I definitely agree, right?
Is that a problem?
No.
Having together, put together.
It's always considered, if you recall, Ms. Bivens will constantly say, you know, for next year's budget, we will need to cut that to keep the savings moving, so we'll work with Ms. Bright to provide that data for you.
Okay, thank you. For how many years? How many years down the road, other than just that one?
Well, typically, there's current year, next year. Is that what you're thinking about for-
No, I'm thinking you're asking for further down the road, is that correct? Well, like I say, if you just-
Eight-year, you've got to balance the budget, so.
Yeah, if you just give me the impact, you know, for the next two years, or, I mean, just-
Remain for this year and then next budget as well.
Right. So, we'll know next year, because when you start looking at that budget, we're not going to look at those individual positions like that, and it's just-
Position.
Right, and it's just going to increase, so.
All right, ma'am clerk.
Item number twenty-one is an appointment to the Civil Service Board to fill the expiring term of Ms. Choice Lancaster as the post-three representative. The term is for three years, expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. This appointment comes from the elected officials of Clayton County, and they have reappointed Choice Lancaster. The Board of Commissioners would just need to ratify the reappointment.
All right, I'll make the motion to ratify. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
It's four to one.
Item number twenty-two is the appointment to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities Region Three Advisory Council to fill a vacancy formerly held by Mr. Brent Benedetti. The term is for three years, expiring on April second, two thousand sixteen. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Deanna Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous. Madam clerk, before we go to the executive section, Mayor Oswald, who is here, would like to say a few words, so I'm going to call him to the podium real quick.
Mr. Chairman and distinguished board, I want to thank you on the behalf of the City of Lake City for your going through all of our meetings, putting all the pieces of the puzzle together. And I would call a lot of different names, but I know if I did, I'd leave somebody out. So, I just want to thank you for us getting together on the fire department. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And also, before we end, I think Chief Murkison has the new person for the medical position here. If we could meet her, if you could introduce-
Introduce her for us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Suda Ready, who on the sixteenth will be assuming our, our role as medical director here in the county. So, she's been well-versed on, on what your vision for health care in this county is, along with this department's vision, specifically the community treatment units, and what they will bring to this county, and she, she shares the same excitement and vision that we do. So, so thank you for, for allowing her to come to work here, and I, I think her results will, will be tremendously felt in this community.
Doctor, did you like to say anything?
I think the programming that you are initiating is innovative, it's groundbreaking, and I'm very privileged to be a part of it.
Well, on behalf of the board, welcome. We're glad you're here. We're looking for great things to happen, so appreciate all that you are going to do for us. Thank you. Motion to go into the executive session.
On real estate and litigation.
On real-
So moved, yes, I'm bet.
Probably move them second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Second, and probably move them second. Those in favor, aye. Oppose? It's unanimous. Mr. Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, two things quickly. I obtained your approval some weeks ago to attempt to settle a case, a claim by a lady whose name is Nikita Moore. Ms. Moore was involved in an automobile wreck with a Clayton County police officer on April twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, at the intersection of Mount Zion Boulevard and Mount Zion Road. She was hospitalized, I think she got out of the hospital about thirty days ago. She was in intensive care for about four months as a result of that wreck, and incurred medical expenses, which we have verified of over seven hundred thousand dollars, as, I told you, the statutory cap for the county is five hundred thousand dollars, plus property damages, and we had recommended to you, and you've authorized, and we've now gotten a settlement agreement to settle her case for five hundred thousand dollars for personal injuries and four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for property damage. I have an executed release, and I just ask you to, on the record, approve that settlement so we can process it for payment.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move them second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?